Good morning and welcome to the Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation given by our Chaplain, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, I am thankful for those individuals, groups, and causes that will be recognized this morning. I wish each and every person that's involved within many blessings. Lord, I'm thankful that we always see a robust group of first responders at these awards ceremony to be recognized for their role in keeping us safe each and every day. And I offer them and ask for your special blessings. Lord, I give all these thanks and ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Good morning and welcome. Let me thank you for attending today's Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. This ceremony celebrates the residents and employees who work and accomplishments help make Hillsborough County a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. Let me say one thing this morning. Usually when a group or someone receives their award or recognition, they immediately leave and walk out the door, which means the last couple of people that get their awards, no one is here. So, I'm going to ask you today, when you get your award, please have a seat and stay so the last group that gets their award will have an audience here to applaud them. If you're a supervisor, manager, a director has a problem with that, tell them to call me. Seriously, tell them to call me. We'll have a discussion about it, but please don't leave. Just have a seat till the program is over because I think that's fair to everyone else because at the end of these programs, no one's here and the last person doesn't get it. So if your boss has a problem with it, tell him to call Leslie Miller. We'll have a long discussion about it, but it'll be very short. Okay? Commissioner Murman, you'll present the first couple of recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's just great to see so many faces here today and just can't wait to see all the recognitions that happened today. Today is where I get to honor something that's very valuable to our community, and that's our libraries. And I'd like to welcome Andrew Brydenbaugh. He's our Director of Library Services. If he could join me up here at the podium. And of course, he has my most valued staff member working for him now, Jeffrey Huggins. Andrew and his dedicated staff at the Tampa Hillsborough County Public Library Cooperative provide outstanding library services to the community. And for its efforts, the cooperative was named Library of the Year by the Florida Library Association. This commendation illustrates how vital libraries are to our residents. Andrew, our deepest congratulations. I want to thank you for all you have done. And this is a commendation to you for getting that award. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners congratulates the Tampa Hillsborough County Public Library for being named Library of the Year by the Florida Library Association. For over 100 years, the library has been steadfast in its belief that literacy and access to information serve as the foundation of strong and prosperous communities. Its innovative initiatives have yielded $1 million in savings. In addition, the library increased access to resources and services and expanded opportunities for community engagement, such as classes and events that meet community needs. In 2018, it modernized its staffing model for improved customer service and eliminated overdue fines, welcoming back 15,000 customers previously unable to use library resources." These accomplishments have been recognized by the Florida Library Association, which has named Tampa Hillsborough County Public Library as Library of the Year for 2019. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Tampa Hillsborough County Public Library and its dedicated staff for their unwavering service to the community and congratulates them on this prestigious distinction. And we're so proud of the work you do, and you've really taken us really into the 21st century, and I just applaud you. Would you like to say a few words? I know you have some people you want to recognize also.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to the entire Board of County Commissioners for the support we get because it's your support and the support of our community that allows us to achieve the things we do. I want to recognize some of that support right now. John Smith is our President of the Friends of the Library, who is an integral to the library and provides us with over $300,000 a year in funding for programs. And we did not bring our own police protection. Felicia Picora is in a different uniform today, is the Chair of our Public Library Advisory Board, so she is also with us today. Come on up. Come up. And I want to recognize in the front row, the executive team of Library Services, who direct the activities of all the 350 amazing people who are the reason that we won this award. So again, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Let's take a picture. Do you want your staff?
Yep, absolutely.
Come on. Come on, you guys. Get up here.
I'm sorry. One more. Thank you, and have a seat. [applause]
They follow instructions well.
Smart move.
That's good. Everybody's watching out there. Okay. My next award is to present with the Economic Development Director, Lindsay Kimball, Manager of Entrepreneur Services, Carol Minor, Economic Development Manager, Jennifer Wilhelm, Miguel Cordova, owner of Cordova Transport, and Jerry Joyce, owner of Alternative Tax Services. Please join me up here at the podium. Well, I know I have spoken praises of our Economic Development Department so many times and what they're doing to help small businesses. Over 80% of our businesses here in Hillsborough County have really 10 or fewer employees. And so this is a very important operation that we have to help serve them. And Hillsborough County Economic Development and its partners and volunteers really deserve an applause for strengthening Hillsborough County's business climate and job creation. Their recent efforts have been recognized four times by the Florida Small Business Development Center at USF and once by TIE Tampa Bay. We will begin with the four awards for Economic Development's partnership with the Florida Small Business Development Corporation. This collaboration has led to the creation of the Hillsborough County, Florida Small Business Development Center, and since 2012, the center has provided a forum to share business knowledge and expertise among its consultants. Additionally, it gives business owners the opportunity to meet with specialists, furthering their ability to develop, grow, and expand. And for its efforts, Economic Development was Florida SBDC's Outstanding Partner of the Year. And I'd like to present this award. I think I give these, they're all numbered up here. And Lindsay, or Carol, you're going to accept it? And we'll give them a clap. So I'm going to give out all the awards and then y'all can say the word. The Hillsborough County, Florida Small Business Development Center is already known for thinking outside of the box. It launched the Small Business Idea Camp, a four-week, 16-hour class where attendees are exposed to theories that help them become entrepreneurs. The center additionally partnered with the Minority Incubator, which has successfully assisted minority-owned businesses in achieving long-term goals. For creating these two innovative programs, the Hillsborough County, Florida Small Business Development Center was the recipient of the Game Changer Award. Congratulations. [applause] Okay, so how are we going to do? Are you going to get all of these awards, Carol?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure, should we line them up somewhere? And then our next award goes to Miguel Cordova, whose company, Cordova Transport, specializes in the hauling of asphalt and millings, including sand, trash, and rubble. Mr. Cordova enhanced his marketing strategy, secured designation as a minority-owned, small, and disadvantaged business. His efforts have been tremendous, leading him to earn the Florida Small Business Development Center's Minority Owned Business of the Year Award. Congratulations, Miguel. Our next award, of course, we all know how volunteers are essential and important to Hillsborough County. One of these volunteers is Jerry Joyce. He's the owner of Alternative Tax Services, who has dedicated his time and accounting expertise to economic development in Hillsborough County FSBDC for over 11 years. He has contributed more than 300 hours to facilitate tax accounting workshops and dedicated more than 150 hours to no-cost consultation with small and startup businesses. That's really admirable. When monetized, Jerry has provided in-kind services totaling over $55,000 throughout his tenure with the center. And for his service, Jerry Joyce is the Florida SBDC's Volunteer of the Year. Certainly well deserved. And then the last award, we'd like to recognize Economic Development Innovation Initiative, also known as EDI II. Its program-oriented framework provides grant funding and support for very large events, along with opportunities that enable entrepreneurs to achieve success. Earlier this year, EDI II received the 2019 Community Champion Award from TIE Tampa Bay, a Silicon Valley-based organization that fosters entrepreneurship through mentoring, networking, education, and funding. The county's EDI II program is now listed as a TIE-TAN, that's T-I-E-T-A-N, award winner for significant contributions to the entrepreneurial ecosystem. Jennifer Wilhelm, congratulations to you and your team for a job very well done. That's awesome. [applause] Do you want to say your word for your team or thank them individually?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to the administration and all the commissioners for your continued support, very, just unwavering support for entrepreneurs and innovation in our community, and we're very appreciative. I'd like to just ask Carol or any of our award recipients if they have anything they'd like to say. Thank you.
So first, thank you, Commissioner Murman, and I wanted to also thank the county administrator and the Board of County Commissioners for their support in helping us to service our community. We are excited to provide consulting services to the businesses throughout our county. And my team, that are not up here, if they could stand and be recognized for the hard work that they do with the small businesses every single day, Dottie particularly, who works with the game-changing Idea Camp, and Corey, who worked with the incubator, we work very hard to make sure the businesses in our county contribute to the prosperity of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
You're the volunteer. Come here. Come on.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say it's an honor to receive this award and to be able to work with such a fine group of volunteers and the employees of the SBDC. I know firsthand that small businesses make up a large number amount of our economy, and most small businesses don't have many resources for free that they can get information before they get in trouble. So that's the reason I stick around a little bit longer. So, very appreciative and thank you.
A little shorter. I wore the tie, sort of, to represent the Titan Award. All right. So thank you, TIE Tampa Bay, for the Community Champion Award. It's incredible to receive acknowledgement from peers working in the startup ecosystem. TIE is an investor organization and a community partner that the county's had since the beginning in growing our tech and innovation ecosystem. The tech industry is vital to our economy by encouraging growth of new business, providing better-paying and longer-lasting jobs than other startups, and contributing more to innovation and productivity. Thank you to our Board of County Commissioners, county leadership, for supporting the tech startup entrepreneurs in Hillsborough County. These tech companies are driving economic growth by the millions, literally, and creating community prosperity for all. Thank you God for the opportunity to serve our citizens. [applause] Commissioner Overman will present the next awards.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to offer the firefighter for the third quarter award. Would Fire Medic Matthew Henderson and other representatives from Hillsborough County Fire Rescue join me at the podium, please? Good morning. Good morning. What I'm about to share with you vividly illustrates the dangers that Hillsborough County's first responders face every day. On July 17th, driver engineer Joseph Fox and fire medic Matthew Henderson entered a burning home that had a four-foot-wide hole in the kitchen ceiling. As fire medic Henderson worked the hose line, driver engineer Fox searched the home to determine if anyone was inside. After a few moments, fire medic Henderson recognized that the structure was failing and shouted to his colleague, "We have to leave." No sooner had the pair reached the front door that the entire roof collapsed behind them. Because of his training and enough time to confirm that no one was inside, and to ensure they both escaped safely, his warning mattered. Driver engineer Fox wrote in the award nominating form, "I believe that fire medic Henderson saved my life that night." For his actions, I am pleased to present the fire medic Henderson, the Fire Rescue's fighter of the third quarter award. Congratulations, and your colleague had your back.
You know, that's kind of like what we do day in and day out, is have each other's back, and it's important because it's not just coworkers that we're working with, it's friends and it's family. So I appreciate the recognition and I gladly accept the award. Thank you.
Thanks to the commissioners for taking time to recognize the many volunteers and the employees of Hillsborough County. Very honored to be a part of an organization that's on the front line doing this every single day and to take an opportunity to recognize one of our outstanding members. Thank you.
And I believe I have this for you as well. Thank you. You have this wonderful pen to add to all of your armaments that you wear on your chest. Thank you very much for being here today. And Commissioner Smith will offer the next...
Take a picture. Take a picture.
Oh, picture, right. Yeah. Of course. And as I was going to say, Commissioner Smith will offer the next award.
Good morning, everyone. Would Fire Rescue Chief Dennis Jones come back up here to the podium? This award is special to me. My husband is an RN, and he began his training as a basic firefighter and EMT. So I know a little bit about the rigorous training that you all go through and the hard work you do and the important work you do saving lives every day. This award is sponsored by the American Heart Association. The Mission Lifeline EMS Program recognizes emergency medical service organizations across the nation for their superior methods in caring for people who suffer from STE elevation, myocardial infarctions, or STEMI for short. This condition is caused by a complete blockage of blood flow to the heart, and it requires timely treatment or the patient will die. It is critical to restore blood flow quickly, either by surgically opening the blocked vessel or by giving anti-clotting medication. The Gold Plus Level, the highest designation, is awarded to EMS agencies that meet or exceed the standard performance measures of STEMI care. It is my pleasure to present the Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award to Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, which has been the recipient of this honor for the third year in a row. An amazing achievement. This recognition further illustrates Fire Rescue's dedication to providing the highest level of cardiac care to Hillsborough County recognitions. Congratulations.
I'm going to just ask Rescue Quality Management Chief Fischler to make our comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and Commissioner Smith, and the Board of County Commissioners. In a nutshell, this award is basically given to fire and EMS agencies that have consistently and accurately excelled at diagnosing and treating cardiac emergencies. It's easier said than done because medicine is constantly changing, and in order to accomplish that goal on a regular daily basis, we have to change with it. We have to make sure that our protocols reflect all those changes and that our crews are trained and equipped to administer the care that we expect from them. Our receipt of this award is due basically to the hard work that our field crews do every day because they're out on the streets and they're the ones that are taking care of all of the citizens, and to the hard work that our training and quality assurance officers do to make sure that our field crews are trained appropriately. So, thank you to the American Heart Association and the Board for the recognition of those efforts.
And let's take a picture with it. Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Miller will present the next two recognitions.
Chief Jones, you can come back. The Fire Marshal Tamla Zula, she's here. Other representatives from Fire Rescue, please join me. National statistics show that four out of every five deaths come from fire in the United States occurring in the home. This demonstrates the importance of having a fire, home fire escape plan, and taking the time to practice it. Fire Rescue stresses this to residents throughout the year as part of the education efforts. This proclamation for Fire Prevention Week drives home this crucial points, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas fire is a serious threat to public safety and people are at a great risk in their homes, and whereas nationally, home fires killed 2,630 people in 2017, and fire departments responded to 357,000 home fires, according to the National Fire Protection Association. Whereas within unincorporated Hillsborough County, home fires killed three people with an injury of 39 in 2018, and Hillsborough County Fire Rescue responded to 519 structured fires, causing $14.6 million in damage. And whereas Hillsborough County first responders are dedicated to reducing the number of house fires, deaths, and injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas residents who develop and practice a home fire escape plan are more prepared and more likely to survive a fire. And whereas a home fire escape plan should include a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and residents should practice their plan at least twice a year, during the day and night. And whereas residents should teach children to escape on their own in the event adults can't help them, ensure that entire household knows a crawl under smoke plan, and stress the importance of not returning to a burning home. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape," "Plan and Practice Your Escape," illustrates that residents need to take personal steps to protect themselves and others in the event of a fire. Now therefore, bear proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 6th to October 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week in Hillsborough County, and urges all residents to develop a home fire escape plan, practice it twice a year, and support Hillsborough County Rescue and its efforts to increase public safety. Excuted this third day of October, 2019, and signed by all members of the county commission."
I think it's significant in a ceremony where we're recognizing Fire Rescue, the service that we provide in EMS and fire, that we also recognize an important part of what we do, a significant part of what we do, which is fire prevention and public safety education. I'd like for Deputy Fire Marshal Chief Saron to make a few comments.
Good morning, and thank you to the commission and the county administration for the continued support. You know, with the theme for this year, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape," Plan and Practice Your Escape, I challenge each and every one of you to think about your homes. Don't just, you know, sit here and say you're going to do it, but actually go home and look at your house, your parents' house, your children's house, whether they live with you or not. Make sure they have a plan and they practice that plan so they can escape. So I challenge you to do that. I also challenge you to check your smoke alarms. Everybody probably thinks, yeah, I'm going to do that, but then they don't actually do that. Go home, check your smoke alarms, you know, check your parents, check your friends, your brother, your sister. That net never ends, and you can challenge them to do the same thing. Every little bit helps, and the difference you can make, you know, when you hear that somebody had a smoke alarm you installed, we go out and install smoke alarms, and you get the feedback that, hey, that smoke alarm actually saved our life, it's pretty remarkable. You don't always hear those stories. A lot of what we do is unsung, you know. States occurring in the home. This demonstrates the importance of having a home fire escape plan and taking the time to practice it. Fire Rescue stresses this to residents throughout the year as part of the education efforts. This proclamation for Fire Prevention Week drives home these crucial points, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas fire is a serious threat to public safety and people are at a great risk in their homes. And whereas nationally, home fires killed 2,630 people in 2017, and fire departments responded to 357,000 home fires according to the National Fire Protection Association. Whereas within unincorporated Hillsborough County, home fires killed three people with an injury of 39 in 2018, and Hillsborough County Fire Rescue responded to 519 structured fires, causing $14.6 million in damage. And whereas Hillsborough County first responders are dedicated to reducing the number of house fires, deaths, and injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas residents who develop and practice a home fire escape plan are more prepared and more likely to survive a fire. And whereas a home fire escape plan should include a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and residents should practice their plan at least twice a year during the day and night. And whereas residents should teach children to escape on their own in the event adults can't help them. Ensure that entire household knows a crawl under smoke plan, and stress the importance of not returning to a burning home. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape", Plan and Practice Your Escape, illustrates that residents need to take personal steps to protect themselves and others in the event of a fire. Now therefore, bear proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 6th to October 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week in Hillsborough County, and urges all residents to develop a home fire escape plan, practice it twice a year, and support Hillsborough County Rescue in its efforts to increase public safety. Executed this third day of October 2019 and signed by all members of the county commission."
I think it's significant in a ceremony where we're recognizing Fire Rescue, the service that we provide in EMS and fire, that we also recognize an important part of what we do, a significant part of what we do, which is fire prevention and public safety education. I'd like for Deputy Fire Marshal Chief Saron to make a few comments.
Good morning, and thank you to the commission and the county administration for the continued support. You know, with the theme for this year, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape", Plan and Practice Your Escape, I challenge each and every one of you to think about your homes. Don't just, you know, sit here and say you're going to do it, but actually go home and look at your house, your parents' house, your children's house, whether they live with you or not. Make sure they have a plan and they practice that plan so they can escape. So I challenge you to do that. I also challenge you to check your smoke alarms. Everybody probably thinks, yeah, I'm going to do that, but then they don't actually do that. Go home, check your smoke alarms, you know, check your parents, check your friends, your brother, your sister. That net never ends, and you can challenge them to do the same thing. Every little bit helps, and the difference you can make, you know, when you hear that somebody had a smoke alarm you installed, we go out and install smoke alarms, and you get the feedback that, hey, that smoke alarm actually saved our life. It's pretty remarkable. You don't always hear those stories. A lot of what we do is unsung, you know, not measurable, but you can make a difference, believe in that you can make a difference, and challenge yourselves to make a note on your phone, you know, plan, practice your escape, and actually go home and do that. So, once again, thank you very much. We appreciate the award. Thank you.
With Dr. Jacqueline Jones, Director of Head Start, Early Head Start, please join me at the podium. Do you have other Head Start staff with you? Do you have other Head Start staff with you? Come on. Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. That's half the room.
Yes.
Good morning, y'all. Act like a family. The Head Start, Early Head Start program is a crucial foundation for the young and very young. In Hillsborough County, the program serves well over 3,000 children. Talk about making a difference. This program is a national model that keeps getting better every year. I'm honored to take the time out each year to formally recognize and celebrate this amazing program with this proclamation. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Head Start, Early Head Start has established itself as the foremost early childhood development and education program in the United States. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has provided funds to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners since the inception of Head Start in 1965 as a comprehensive family-oriented early childhood program for low-income parents. And whereas with matching funds provided by the Board of County Commissioners for full-day, full-year services, Hillsborough County Head Start, Early Head Start helps working families become self-reliant while in the process of becoming one of the best Head Start programs in the nation. And whereas Hillsborough County Head Start, Early Head Start collaborates with childcare partners and delegates and agencies, Hillsborough County Public Schools, Tampa Metropolitan Area YMCA, and Lutheran Services Florida. And whereas this collaboration provides education, health, nutritional, and social services to more than 3,400 infants, toddlers, children, and their families in Hillsborough County each year. And whereas every year, Hillsborough County Head Start, Early Head Start, along with Head Start programs nationwide, celebrate Head Start Awareness Month through public awareness campaigns, center visits, and volunteer support activities. Now therefore, bear proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 2019 as Head Start Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all citizens to show support for their unique program by engaging in activities that strengthen families and communities, providing an optional educational environment for healthy childhood development, executed this third day of October 2019 and signed by the seven members of the Board of County Commissioners."
Good morning, everyone. How are you? My name is Dr. Jenkins. Everybody calls me Dr. J. And so as Commissioner Miller offered, the board's Head Start program serves over 3,000 children, about 3,500 children. We're in the Board of County Commission buildings. We're in the school district, Y, Lutheran, R Club, Easter Sales, Bible Base, King's Kids, and our newest partner is with ABC. We serve children zero to five years old, mainly in low-income situations. We can always say that we can tell how people are by their early childhood experiences, all right? Zero to five is when the brain development is most critical. It determines the outcome that the child will have in reference to their adult years. And so I just want to give thanks to Commissioner Miller and to all of the board, Mike, Carl, for supporting this Head Start program. October is National Head Start Awareness Month, and so I just say, if you have little ones in your house or homes, when you see them on the street, they are the future for tomorrow. Just offer your blessings to them and just thank the board for allowing us to do this good work. This is a large team here, you guys. I wish they could introduce themselves, but... But thank you so much.
Commissioner White will present the next recognition.
This time, I'd like to invite Director of Field Maintenance Services, Rich Cummings, and his team to the podium. The Water Resources Department does an incredible job providing wastewater services to more than 640,000 residents. Its dedicated employees maintain more than 1,800 miles of gravity pipe, 668 miles of force main, and 817 pump systems. The department uses state-of-the-art technology including supervisory control and data acquisition and GIS web applications to manage and track pump station performance. In addition, the department collaborates with several organizations and agencies, including the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association and Polk State College to provide thousands of hours of comprehensive training, and it shows in the outstanding work and safety records of this team. This is a well-oiled machine and one that is proactive as well. For example, the department's environmental team established the cooking oil recycling effort, which teaches customers how to properly dispose of cooking oil, grease, and fat that can damage pipes. These achievements and more are why the Florida Water Environment Association named Hillsborough County Water Resources the 2019 Collection System of the Year in the Large Utilities category for fostering excellence in the operation and maintenance of wastewater collection systems. This is an outstanding honor, and we could not be more proud of you. I'd like to congratulate the team and invite you to come on up and say a few words.
Great job, everybody.
Thank you, commissioners. I, for one, it's an honor to be here and a pleasure to work with these dedicated professionals who are stewards of the environment. These are the guys they call 24/7. When you're watching a Super Bowl game, but your toilet won't flush, you're calling my team. So, and as long as I'm talking about the toilet, please be careful what you put down the toilet. It's not a trash can. Their daily actions are largely unnoticed for what they do, so an accomplishment like this one is very appreciated. Attaining this award is a longtime goal of our department and for myself personally, and we are thrilled to be recognized. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
And Commissioner Kemp will present our next recognition.
Thank you. Would Rick, what's the last name? Shantz, thank you. Would Rick Shantz and EPC Executive Director Janet Doherty please join me at the podium? I had to do that one last time. Never get to do it again. Rick Shantz's title at the Environmental Protection Agency of Hillsborough County was General Counsel. He was outstanding, he was an outstanding one at that, but he also did much more. He's a legal expert, a leader, and a mentor. Mr. Shantz has made a world of difference to the EPC in his 19-year tenure. He recently retired, and we're happy to recognize him here today. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Rick Shantz on the occasion of his retirement after 19 years of truly exemplary service as General Counsel of the Environmental Protection Commission of Hillsborough County. A graduate of Florida State University College of Law, Mr. Shantz's advocacy for the environment and the public have made significant impacts at the local and statewide level throughout his more than 36-year legal career. An expert in natural resource protection laws, Mr. Shantz provided key testimony before state lawmakers to preserve the EPC's local wetland regulations. So such, such important work. His negotiating skills as lead counsel resulted in a $1.20 million, a $1.2 million sound barrier to shield residents from noise generated by a local amphitheater. I know there are many grateful residents in Hillsborough County for that work. Administratively, he assumed the duties as Director of Legal and Administrative Services, which included the oversight of legal, finance, human resources, and technology departments. He played a key role in the agency, receiving the Florida's Governor's Sterling Award for Performance Management. Furthermore, Mr. Shantz shared his expertise as an instructor at the Florida Chamber of Commerce Environmental Permitting School. He's a true leader, as evidenced by the Florida Local Environmental Resources Agency honoring him with its 2019 Environmental Leadership Award. Congratulations on that. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Rick Shantz for making the EPC a better agency, thanks him for his dedication, and wishes him the best in the next chapter of his life. Thank you so much, Rick. Would you like to say a few words here, I'm sure?
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome. You're so welcome.
Good morning. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Miller for making you all stay. So I'm at the end of the agenda. You've got somebody to talk to. And I'm not sure I deserve to be in the same room as some of you firefighters, but I'll take it, you know. Thank you for that. This, I've also not been a person to put up any plaques or diplomas on my wall, but this one's going up to have all seven commissioners sign it. I'm very proud to receive something like this. I really do appreciate it. But when you, when you talk about an individual accomplishing things, it's, I don't think an individual, as you can see from the other groups that came today, ever accomplishes anything without a team. And it's the team at the Environmental Protection Commission that deserves so much. Janet, the executive director. We have a team back here. If I could ask you all to stand, please, a representative group of our senior staff and legal team. And they are the people that really do the work here, and I wanted them for the picture too, so if you don't mind coming on up for that. But I hope, I hope everybody realizes, and maybe the people watching on TV and online, that Tampa Bay is just a paradise to live in. This, we are so blessed to have a place like this. And to land, to manage this land and the resources, it takes a team like the EPC and like the Water Resources Group that just came up, and of course, the commissioners. Without, this is a great board for support for the environment, and we couldn't do it without that kind of support or the support of everybody at the EPC. So yes, I'm accepting this, but it's on behalf of our whole team. And thank you so much. I didn't think, a retired Monday, I didn't think I'd be putting a suit back on this quick, but I'm happy to do it for this. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the board. Appreciate it.
Y'all come up for a picture. We love our EPC. Would Scott Clark, Director of Sunshine Line, and Driver Dorcas Figueroa, please join me at the podium? For those of you who aren't familiar with Sunshine Line, Sunshine Line and its drivers play an important role in Hillsborough County by providing door-to-door transportation to seniors and residents who have disabilities and do not have or cannot afford their own transportation. So today, we are recognizing the department's efforts in addition to one of its drivers. The first commendation we have here honors Sunshine Line's accomplishments this past year from providing cold-weather shelter transportation to the homeless, to participating in the children's, foster children's summer field trip transportation project. And that is this award to Sunshine Line.
We have our whole team here, too.
Oh, oh, let's bring up the whole team. You all do such wonderful work, and I have to say, I hear so many things about the Sunshine Line and how appreciative people in the community who use your services and who talk about how well and wonderfully they're treated. Oh, I'm so glad you brought the whole. Thank you all for being able to join us today. This is great. We have a crowd here, huh? The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Sunshine Line for its dedication and exemplary record in serving the transportation disadvantaged in Hillsborough County since amid 1970. Since mid-1970, Sunshine Line has significantly impacted the daily lives of residents who are unable to transport themselves because of physical or mental disability, income, status, or age. The transportation service has been instrumental in providing residents greater self-sufficiency, helping to create community prosperity. Sunshine Line has consistently surpassed industry standards and evaluations by the Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board. Even with a 20% increase in new customers and a 10% increase in door-to-door pickups, Sunshine Line was able to maintain on-time performance and achieve a customer satisfaction rating of 97%. Who gets 97%?[644.32][644.32](laughter) Virtually all customers recently surveyed indicated that the service improved their independence and quality of life. Sunshine Line has proven to be an important lifeline to residents who truly need help. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Sunshine for, the Sunshine Line, for its ongoing commitment to fulfilling transportation needs and improving its customers' quality of life. So thank you all so much for your work every day, and would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for recognizing Sunshine Line and the many things we do to help create community prosperity and serve the transportation disadvantaged. With me, I have a representation of our larger team. We have members from management, administration, customer service, operation, and of course, our drivers. It's these individuals who make it happen every single day. They're the ones who are dedicated, scheduling the trips, finding transportation solutions for those difficult trips day in and day out. And it's our drivers who are out there in the community in the blistering heat, torrential rain, fighting traffic, navigating through construction sites and through accident scenes and dealing with angry drivers. And right when they start running their routes on time, well, here comes a train.[738.11][738.11](laughter) So they're truly deserving of this award. And it's not only, Sunshine Line can't do this by themselves. There's a much larger team that operate in the background, and that starts with our county leadership, our county commissioners, our county administrator, Chief Human Services Administrator, Mr. Harness, who through their leadership and their guidance, direction, and support, were able to achieve our mission. And also for recognizing that there is a need for specialized transportation in the community other than just our normal transportation. With that, we also have all of our department partners on the Human Services Team, and then our internal service departments that help us run efficiently, including fleet management, who keep our vehicles rolling, then our external state and local agencies like the NPO and our Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board, and of course, our many community partners who use Sunshine Line to help their clients who are trying to overcome homelessness, addiction, human trafficking, and who work with people with disabilities, and for children at risk, and for moms-to-be. You know, it truly takes, the old saying says, "It takes a village." Working with the transportation disadvantage, it truly takes a village. So thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you so much.[832.69][832.69](applause) And we'll do the pictures at the end. We'll do the other recognition now. So now I'd like to recognize Dorcas Figueroa.[851.04][851.04](applause) As one of Sunshine Line's minibus drivers, Dorcas has served Hillsborough County for nearly 30 years? That's incredible. I wasn't even sure the Sunshine Line was here that long. That's incredible.[872.23][872.23](laughter) Wow. It says, "Wow, an incredible achievement."[877.54][877.54](laughter) For her dedication, I'm honored to present this commendation to you, and let me, here. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Dorcas Figueroa for her 29 years of service as a driver for Sunshine Line. Serving as a paratransit minibus operator for Sunshine Line is more than a job for Ms. Figueroa. It's an opportunity to provide a vital service to seniors, low-income residents, and people with disabilities who have limited mobility options. She always greets her passengers with a smile, whether it's a trip to the doctor's appointment, senior center, grocery store, or shopping mall. Her positive upbeat attitude connects on a personal level with passengers. Ms. Figueroa's tireless work ethic has earned her several of the Sunshine Line's Award of Excellence recognitions. In 2018, Ms. Figueroa drove 18,851 miles. I think she deserves applause for that.[955.23][955.23](applause) Wow, that increases her total mileage to over a million miles, capping her 29-year career as Sunshine Line's longest-serving driver. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Dorcas Figueroa for her unwavering dedication to the community and congratulates her on her hard work and accomplishments.
Thank you.
And that's for you.[996.11][996.11](applause) It's time for you to say a few words.
Just a few words? Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for this recognition. I really appreciate it. I couldn't do it without my team also. I have a great team, and I have an awesome boss, Scott Clark. He's our director. He keeps us in line, which is good.[1022.81][1022.81](laughter) And he has kept us strong since 2006 until now, and I appreciate that. Cory Norris, our manager. My awesome, handsome supervisor here, Gustavo Toro. I love you to death. I love everybody on my team. I enjoy my job. I enjoy coming to work. I'm not big on words, but I'm happy to say that my husband is here.[1048.73][1048.73](laughter) Of 30, 31 years, guys.[1051.33][1051.33](applause) And my, I appreciate that. Thank you so much for that, but um, thank you, baby, for, you know, putting up with me for so long.[1064.83][1064.83](laughter) Also, before I let everything go, again, thank you, Scott. I really appreciate you. I appreciate everybody here today. And my baby girl, Angela Merida Figueroa. I love you.[1077.23][1077.23](laughter) Thank you. Thank you, man.[1080.23][1080.23](applause)
Would you like your family, your family could join us up here?
Commissioner Kemp, before, before you take the picture, I'm being blocked by this guy who blocks the sun here.[1091.01][1091.01](laughter) But let, we had, we had another one, too. What other guy go with?[1101.33][1101.33](laughter) Ms. Figueroa, congratulations on your award, but let me say this. My mother passed away in 2009, but because of osteoporosis and severe arthritis, it disabled her, and there were many times that I could not get her to the doctor, and Sunshine Line was able to get her there. They didn't know that that was my mom. I was in the legislature also. It was the best transportation and service she should have received, could have received, that you all gave her, taking her back and forth to the doctors and things, those lines, when I could not. So I just want to say, you thank us so very much for, you probably took her sometimes, too. So I want to thank you very much for that.[1135.33][1135.33](applause)
How are we set up for a picture?
These days are always so much fun. You get to celebrate the excellence. I am lucky enough to offer the James E. Huger, I assume that's how you say that, Huger Award to Felicia Crosby Rucker. Could you come forward?[1224.01][1224.01](applause) One of my rock stars.[1232.33][1232.33](laughter) Thank you. And I've got, gotten a chance to work with you a lot lately, and I'm thrilled to have the honor to give this award to you. As a Director of Homeless Services, Ms. Rucker has served in several roles in the county. She has afforded her, this has afforded her the opportunity to coordinate and collaborate with partners to grow and preserve affordable housing, as well as revitalize communities by increasing access to services. For her dedication, dedicated service to the county, Ms. Crosby Rucker was recognized earlier in the year by the Florida Community Development Association with its James E. Huger Award, a highly coveted honor. Mr. Huger was a founder and past president of the National Community Development Association and the FCDA, both for, both which advocate for community, housing, and economic development resources to help communities grow and prosper. The award recognizes outstanding leadership and service. Fittingly, Ms. Crosby Rucker, who was just elected as Vice President of the FCDA, received this award at the organization's annual training conference, which was held in Tampa for the second year running. Congratulations. I know this is a very special honor for you, and I want to show you the award. You can show everybody else. There you go. There you go. Would you like to say a few words?[1338.54][1338.54](laughter) I, I know you have a whole team up here that just absolutely adores you, so come on.
My staff is at meetings. I think I have one staff person here. First, I want to say thank you, Commissioner Oberman. Thank you, Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Greg. And county leadership, the rest of county leadership for acknowledging me for receiving this award. I am proud to be a public servant, and I don't take this role lightly. Every day, I get a chance to come to work and work with some amazing people here at County Center and throughout the county, as well as community partners out there as we address homelessness in our community. I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve and opportunity to serve on this platform to help others in our community. So thank you.
You do, you certainly deserve it.
A team effort.[1386.73][1386.73](applause)
Before, 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 before we take this picture, let me say, I came on this board in 2010, and I was on the Board of Housing Board Agency, whatever it's called now. Felicia was there, did an outstanding job, and then she went over to start working with homelessness. And let me tell you something. When our offices get calls for those folks who don't have a place to live or looking someplace to go, she's the person that we call. And guess what? She immediately gets to work, and it happens. For veterans out there that are homeless, she helped put together a program that, that placed homeless veterans in a place to live. And so we want to thank you for all that you've done and all that you do. Thank you. Appreciate it.[1431.33][1431.33](applause)
I am fortunate enough to offer another wonderful award to an outstanding public servant, with Pet Resources Director Scott, I always screw up your last name. I'm so sorry, Scott. Where are you? Come on up. Come on up. It's good to see you again. We saw you yesterday, so thank you very much. As the largest animal shelter, oh yes, bring your team up, please, please. Thank you for being here. As the largest animal shelter in the Tampa Bay region, the Pet Resources Center has been instrumental in providing refuge for lost and unwanted pets, quality veterinary care, and a superior adoption program. In 2018, a dynamic duo of dedicated employees and a core, and a core of over 100 volunteers helped the PRC develop and implement numerous daily socialization programs for up to 500 pets in the shelter at any time, which increases the adoptability of these pets. Over 9,000 dogs and cats have benefited from these volunteer-driven enrichment programs. Thanks to these outstanding results, more pets now have forever homes. Pet Resources was presented with the National Association of Counties Achievement Award in the volunteer category, recognizing the center's program, Hillsborough County's Pet Enrichment Program Aid Adoptions. Scott, thank you for all that you and your staff have done to continue our county's pets. Thank you so very, very much. Would you like to say a few words?
First, I'd like to thank this Board of County Commissioners for an unprecedented commitment to the animals. Back in 2013, the Board and county administration decided it was time to step up and save more lives. Since that time, over 80,000 animals have found homes. That's just in the last six years, so it's amazing, the work. And I wanted to share with all of you, it's not just us that, that appreciate and recognize. We had a consultant who's worked in 100 different shelters and communities come in and say the support that you guys have shown is unprecedented in the rest of the country. So thank you, guys, for what you do to make us successful. I wanted to bring all 825 volunteers.[1631.96][1631.96](laughter) You know, yeah. Yeah. But, you know, we have a lot of different programs that those 825 volunteers do. With me is my staff. I've got my Director of Shelter Operations, Lori Lutzring, and my two volunteer coordinators, Christine Odell and Chrissy Lito. And Chrissy actually started as a volunteer before we kind of roped her in and made her an employee to help with these programs. The 100 people or so that help with this daily enrichment have not only made the dogs' lives better in the shelter, it makes them more adoptable, and we actually innovated a program to not only socialize animal to animal, but animal to people, which is being adopted now nationally because of our volunteers and our volunteer team thinking of something to broaden the enrichment. So our staff does a lot of the technical stuff, and you hear us up here, but it's this big group of volunteers who put in over 25,000 hours a year in free time working for us that gives these animals a better day-to-day life, gives them a chance to get out of their cages, to get special food and treats, and without it, I don't think we would adopt as many animals as we do.
Well, congratulations.
Well, this concludes our ceremony. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming and staying.[1776.51][1776.51](laughter) It made, it made a difference. It really made a difference, because usually, at the end of this, it's only two or three people in here, and by you staying, it makes a difference. And to all of those bosses out there, I was joking. No, I wasn't. But thank you for staying. And let me thank all of you for the employees, for what you do for us each and every day, and those at the agencies that work with us. do for us each and every day, and those at agencies that work with us, we want to thank you. But to all the employees of Hillsborough County, I know you don't get the attaboys and thank yous, but thank you for all that you do for this county to make this county a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. Thank you so very much. The commissioners, thank you for being here, and thank you for sticking around and doing this. I think the employees appreciate it very much when the commissioners are here doing what they do, so thank you so very much. So everyone, have a great day, have a great weekend, and let's get back to work.